Join me, please, stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America, and considering the public which stands one nation under our ground, universal, for the greater good of the citizens for all our world.
Kelly, may I have a roll call?
Mr. Agman?
Here.
Mr. Kessler?
Here.
Mr. DeS?
Here.
Mr. Eder?
Here.
Can I get a motion for approval of tonight's agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I will second.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mr. DeS?
Yes.
Mr. Eder?
Yes.
Mr. Agman?
Yes.
And then if I can get a motion for approval of the February 21st, 2024, meeting minutes.
I'll also approve those, or make a motion to approve those.
I will second.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mr. DeS?
Epstein, what do you have to add?
Mr. Eder?
Yes.
Mr. Agman?
Yes.
All right, as far as this evening, we have SIMS number 2022-03. Review of a final development plan to allow construction of a drive-through and walk-up coffee shop on the site with associated parking lot modifications, landscape installation, and signage. The subject property is located at 9201 Fields Erdl Road. Brian? Welcome.
Good evening, Brian Snyder, Hamlin County Planning and Development. I prepared the report. You should have a copy of the report in front of you. This is a final development plan approval request to allow a drive-through coffee shop that you just discussed at 98281 Field Erdl. This property was part of, it's an outlot in the Coles parcel, essentially. It was part of a much larger zone change originally. It's gone through a bunch of different zone changes over the years. The most recent zone change it went through was in 2022. The township trustees approved a zone change to allow the outlot to be created, essentially. The previous case that was governing the property had a limit on the number of buildings, and the outlot would have been at one more building than permitted. To change those conditions when they're approved by the township trustees requires a whole new zone change. They went through that. It's called a major revision. And it went to the trustees who approved the request. Sorry, as part of case 2022-03. That case did show a restaurant building on the property and parking, a sign at Fields Erdl Road, connections to the existing other outlot and the existing network of driveways inside the parking lot. And there were three conditions and one variance that were, one variance that was granted as part of that request. The proposed use is for a 510-square-foot drive-through and walk-up coffee shop. There would be no indoor seating or indoor dining. There would be two drive-through lanes, a total of 36 parking spaces, a flat roof metal canopy that would cover the pickup area and the drive-through lanes, the actual pickup part of the drive-through lanes where you would get your coffee, I'm assuming. There would be a sign located on Fields Erdl Road and a dumpster and dumpster enclosure located in the southwest portion of the property, closer to Fields, or closer to Union Cemetery Road. Landscaping is proposed around the interior of the site and along Fields Erdl Road. And, as I stated, one freestanding sign along Fields Erdl Road is proposed. The township, as I stated, placed three conditions on this case. Staff found that the proposed submitted final development plan would comply with those three conditions. There is a detailed signage plan that has been submitted. The applicant has also submitted a detailed landscape plan that complies with the zoning resolution and a detailed lighting plan that complies with the zoning resolution. The one variance related to allowing a 26-foot rear yard setback where 50 feet is required, the building and the dumpster enclosure both meet that rear yard setback requirement. The only issues that staff actually found with zoning compliance on the property were with signage in the dumpster. I'll talk about signage first. As you're familiar with dealing with these properties on Fields Erdl Road, they're requesting signage on the three facades, the ones facing east and west along Fields Erdl Road and the one facing directly at Fields Erdl Road along the north facade. Staff usually complies or compiles the numbers that are permitted on the building as of right. This is a corner lot because it does have frontage on Union Cemetery Road, so it would be permitted signage on two facades. The total amount of signage that would be permitted would be 37 and 1/2 square feet on the northern facade and 26.25 on the western facade, for a total of 63.75 square feet. That's what the code would allow on those two facades only. The applicant is proposing signage on the three facades, as I stated. On the northern facade, they're proposing 35.93 square feet, which would comply with what's permitted on the northern facade. They're also proposing 39.42 square feet of signage on the eastern facade, which would be 13.17 square feet over what's permitted. And they're proposing matching 39.42 square foot signs on the eastern facade, I'm sorry, on the western facade, which is not permitted at all. That's where zero signage would be permitted as of right. So they're asking for 114.77 square feet of signage on three facades, and the zoning code allows 63.75 square feet on two facades. As always, staff is concerned about the precedent for this type of variance. There are a number of other fast food and retail establishments on outlots along Fields Erdl Road that may want similar signage in the future. As far as the dumpster location and the canopy, actually, both of them are within the side yard setback. There was no variance granted to side yard setback as part of the county, or as part of the township trustees' approval. So they are required to meet the side yard setback for principal structures. The dumpster isn't required to meet that, and the canopy is considered a principal structure, which is required to meet that as well because it's attached to the building. The canopy is, it looks like to be about one foot, like just slightly over the line. That may be an error. It may be something that's easy to fix, may not need to be granted a variance. I'll let the applicant decide if they want to ask for that or not, but it is not substantial. The dumpster enclosure would be five feet from the side where 30 feet is required. Staff finds that the dumpster where they're proposing it is back-to-back with the dumpster for the adjacent Burger King. You could make them move it to meet those, the setback requirements. There are other locations in the site that would meet the requirements. But then you're kind of spreading out the trash handling areas along the rear. You already have one established on this corner of the Burger King site. That dumpster was granted a variance to be located in that location as part of their recent redevelopment. So staff finds that if the variance were granted for this one to be basically in the same location as the Burger King, then you would have the trash handling areas in the similar location, granting a similar variance for both similar outlots. Other than that, that's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So I have a couple of questions. So first off, if you look at this picture that's up on the screen, it looks like the way that, that the red line is around the property, that there's no way to get into Burger King without there being either a cross contract between the two properties or... So I'm not really sure what's going on there.
So, I mean, the, the outlot was cut out of the Coles property, so Burger King always had to cross somebody else's property to get into their building. And I'm assuming that the proper easements are in place, as have been since the Coles and Burger King were first constructed.
Second is, if you could just remind me and the rest of the committee, I think Burger King wanted three signs.
I believe they did.
Yeah. And what did we agree to?
Two, I believe.
Okay. And so, and, and I think Longhorn also maybe asked for that as well.
I believe they may have.
Yeah. So we've never given a variance on three, three-side signage?
I don't believe that you've granted one for any new construction building.
Right.
In, in one of these areas. I think there have been buildings up the street that were reconstructed that used to have four, that were approved for having three because it was getting closer to compliance. I think were the findings of the commission at the time. So, you know, there's a Firestone and a Taco Bell. There's a couple of older establishments further up that probably have signage on more than two facades, but I believe that they used to have signs on all four originally.
Okay. So, and, and there's no pedestal sign or anything like that on Fields Erdl that they've requested?
They have proposed a small, yeah, they have.
A small one, okay.
It, it complies with the maximum height in the area. It's actually smaller than permitted.
So there would be east-west visualization of a sign even if it weren't on the side of the building?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Where it says, "drive-through coffee," you have it, they have it at a total of 7.66 square feet, is that considered a sign?
Yes, it is.
They classified it that way?
Yep.
I vaguely recall in your report mentioning menus and banners. What are the restrictions on those, if any?
They'll be restricted depending on exactly what they are. Like I said, they showed them on some of the elevations. They didn't provide any details for those, so they're not considered something that would be approved as part of this request. Menu boards are permitted for fast food-type restaurants where you have a drive-through. There's a limitation on the number, the location, and then you're allowed to have window signage at a certain percentage on the facade of the building. So if that's how they want to do it, then they can do all of that without violating the zoning resolution. And those aren't things that require zoning certificates, so we don't typically see them on final development plans.
So on the west, sorry. So on the west facade, where the line of sign is not permitted, there could be window signage?
If they had a window, I'm not sure that they have any windows on that side, or it's very limited.
Maybe they can answer that question.
Then the most of that side is the, is the, I guess, the walking floor building.
They can answer that question for us. Seems to be a sliding door or something. Possible window, so, okay.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, thank you.
Would the applicant like to step up? And as you do so, if you could state your name and provide us with an address?
So my name's Sarah Kramer. I'm with Wolfert. We're the engineer for the owner. Basically, we're kind of willing to work with the canopy. We can move that. I think it's only like eight inches or something like that, so it's a quick fix. I think what we're trying to do is to get a variance for that dumpster enclosure because it's kind of in an area where trash is collected and everything. So that would be one of the things that we're looking to, to get a variance on. And then the other item was if three facades weren't going to be allowed, then we would negate the northern facade of signage.
So the medallion on the north facade, facing Fields Erdl, you would eliminate that?
No, no. Sorry, I'm, I'm at Plan North, sorry, I'm looking at the, at the plans. That would be the, the western side then, sorry. I, I was just kind of looking at the plan right there.
The one that's not approved by code?
Yes.
Right.
Okay. So you're okay, you're saying that you're okay not having any signage on the west?
On the west, yes.
Okay.
Which would be at that top, the top elevation.
Right.
Just for my own benefit, can you provide us a little bit of background on Seven Brew? Do they have any facilities in the tri-state area?
Yeah, so we're actually built, we're in the process of getting permitted in Miami Township. We have a couple in the Columbus area, some that have just gotten built, and then some that we're in design for. The kind of layout of how this facility works is it's mostly drive-through. I know it's, they, they said walk-up is available, but it's not really that many people. It's mostly just customers that are in, on their way to work, going through the line, and it's kind of almost like a Chick-fil-A where you have the employees that are coming out and grabbing the orders from all the way back, putting in the orders, and then you have employees giving the order and, and just kind of having a cyclical thing of just having cars go through, so.
Is it just coffee, or are there food items as well?
It's just coffee.
Okay, in terms of function, we got, there's no drive-up window and nobody reaching out of the building. It's just employees walking out?
Employees, yes. That's why we have the covered canopy, so that they can kind of be able to protect from elements.
So it's like a sign? Where are the orders placed? Are the orders placed overall?
They, they have those.
Speaker box, or?
No, we don't have a speaker box. It's just a, kind of almost like a Kindle of sorts, or like a smart tablet that they take orders from, and it kind of goes back to the kitchen.
Oh, so there's somebody stationed outside all the time?
Yes.
Ah, okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
So the, there's that refrigeration building?
The cooler, yeah.
Cooler, yeah. So it seemed like a pretty big cooler, just to begin with, you know? Is that, is that just refrigeration, or is it?
It's just for storage of the supplies and...
It's a lot of creamer.
Yeah. So, yeah, and the facade's the same as the building, so we make it nice and looking, appealing and everything, so.
Okay.
So you talked about eliminating the signage on the west, which is not permitted under what we have here. At the same time, the signage that's on the east side is still over by 13.17 square feet. So that, that probably, I mean, I have my opinion on that, but we'd like to keep it within code, so. Does that cause an issue, or, I mean, are you willing to address that, or?
I believe we're, we're trying to request for a variance on that.
Correct, I understand that, but is there any, I mean, usually places like this that are quote-unquote "chains," chains have different sizes of sign for this very reason?
Yeah. Matthew, do you know what their options are for?
We prefer to go with the variance.
Yeah.
Are you able to scale it back?
I don't believe they do have the option to scale. Yeah.
They're all custom-made signs. It's not like you went to the store and bought it off the shelf, so they can make it any size you want.
You could come up and give us your name and address, please?
Yes, sir. Matthew Waymoth. My address, 5831 Stewart Road. The, the signage on Plan North or West and not having that, we're happy to work with, with you guys on that for sure. But signage for us is extremely important, especially for brain recognition in the stage that we're at. So we would prefer that, especially with the Burger King on that side and kind of blocking visibility a little bit. The size would, would help, would help us. We would prefer that. In the event that we were denied that, we obviously would work with you on that, but we would prefer the size as submitted.
Okay.
And is there any option of including the canopy in the width at all? I know in some other townships, we've been able to include that.
However, Brian determined it.
Okay.
No.
Just trying.
Any concerns at all at, on an extremely hectic, busy day, that traffic would back up?
No, we, we account for 24 cars stacking in our, in our plan set, which is more than what municipalities do, and even our traffic studies on case-by-case basis. We don't ever have that, those types of problems.
And as noted, our monument sign is smaller than the, than the required, or the maximum size, so we would ask kind of an exchange for the variance on the building in that regard.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on behalf of the proposed plan?
Just briefly, Greg Malin of Casto, 250 Civic Center Boulevard, Columbus. We, and it's not on this photo, but we own the property today, and then we own the Coles as well that's, that's behind us, so this will sit in front of us. And so we're in support of where they want to put the dumpster, because we're going to own the building in the back, and it's, you know, it seems to be the most efficient place for it. And so, you know, from an adjacent property owner perspective, we support the location and hope you will grant them that variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak on behalf of the proposed plan? Would anyone like to speak against the proposed plan?
Good evening. My name's Matt Fellerhoff, an attorney with Strauss Troy in Cincinnati. I was here presenting, I represent the Kahn Family Trust, who is the property owner who owns the land beneath the Burger, the Burger King. This, this is a matter that has been discussed when the original approval of the lot split occurred. I appeared and expressed my client's concerns about the approval, particularly not knowing who the user was. We asked that it be, the user not, the lot split not be approved until the user was known, so you could see what is happening on, on the property. This board indicated that they would give, do attention to whoever the new user would be, and we asked that you do that in this case. This is a little unusual in the way, the way I'm going to explain this. We asked that this, this matter either be postponed, the approval of this be postponed, or it be denied. And the reason we're asking that it be postponed is that there has been an ongoing conversation with the potential new buyer of the property and all of the parties involved, including representatives of Casto, about amending potentially the underlying cross easements that are on the property. That has not occurred yet. And one of the proposals that's being made, that has been discussed, was potentially reconfiguring the site to address some of my client's concerns. There, and my client was engaged in these conversations. I don't know if this board had the benefit of a letter that we had forwarded today. It was a letter to the representative of Anchor Point Management Group, who's, who's purchasing the property, and it was copied to SIMS Township. And I don't know if you have the benefit of that. If you don't, I didn't want to give you extra copies, but if I may.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Oh, I thought you said, "don't take it," like, no, don't take that. It's like, okay.
And as I said, conversations are ongoing, and actually, just before I walked in here, I had a conversation with Maggie, I'm, I'm not going to get her names pronounced right, Georglis, who's the representative, who's been doing these, been engaged in these conversations. She tells me that there is going to be a proposal that is forthcoming, and asks that I not appear to, appear here because we're working this out. And my point to her was, we haven't worked this out, and this is a final development plan approval. She explained to me that she didn't think this was a final development plan approval where the buildings were cited and everything. I disagreed about that, and...
I'm sorry, who is this lady again? I apologize.
She is the lawyer for, she's a lawyer for...
She's not, she's not an attorney.
I'm sorry, she's not an attorney? Okay, but she is a representative of your company?
Yes, she is.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. She, I, I take that back, I misunderstood. But I just did have a conversation with her. And the issue, and I'll try to say you understand, it's the question that was raised, there are, there is a declaration of reciprocal easement agreement that addresses the property. And in that declaration of reciprocal easement agreement, which is attached to this letter, item two and three deal with parking and access on this property. And particularly, item two deals with access, and it reserves, for the benefit of my client, certain areas on the property for access, and they're illustrated on the, the plan, the governor's plaza plan. And the area surrounding my client's property to the west, and I guess that's the south, that is cross-hatched, is, under that plan, identified as the access areas for my clients, for the benefit of my client. This plan puts a dumpster, curbs, grass, and a one-way, two-one-way drives in that general area. That is a problem for my client. We are trying to work this out. One of the issues that, one of the potential issues that was discussed was potentially, to satisfy my client's concerns, moving the building and rearranging this, this setup as is being proposed. As it stands right now, my client objects to this. It has a dramatic effect on the established rights that my client has. I ask, so that we can work this out before a final approval of this matter, that the parties involved work this out, because I think this is getting the cart before the horse, to approve this, it's going to have a negative effect on my client, and frankly, we may work this out, and we can, we can be in full support of this if we work it out, but right now, we don't, and it has a negative effect on my client. For those reasons, that's the request, is that it be postponed, so we can work this out. If not, because of the negative effect on my client, that it be denied. Thank you. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Declaration of reciprocal easement agreement two, it says that you have to work it out with Duke.
Those, those are all successors in title?
Okay. Does it say that in here?
Not, not in that document, but they are, and that's been, there has been an ongoing conversation between a number of parties about this. I'm told I'm going to get a draft in the very near future.
So is successor entitled, then, Casto?
I believe Casto is, under that is Duke, is successor in title, but then Casto is selling...
Correct, but right now, it would be Casto.
It would be Casto, but it's all amongst those, those necessary...
Yeah, yeah, I'm just trying to...
And where it says Burger King, it's not, Burger King actually sold the, the property to my client.
Oh, it's corporate court, Burger.
Yes, but then there's a Burger King franchise on there.
At least that name matches, right?
Yeah.
And then exhibit, they're referring to in the, in the decoration here as Exhibit C, oh, here it is, Exhibit C is this right here.
Yes.
And Exhibit C just has crosshatches.
And it refers to those crosshatches.
Is there a legal to those crosshatches?
There is not a legal, there is not a legal to this crosshatches. I do understand, I don't have it here, that there is a further, more specific demarcation of this easement in another document that Casto produced later in the chain of title. But it is what it is, and...
Sure, no, that's fine, I understand. Let me ask you another question.
Sure.
Since you were present when we approved this use, I mean, I'm sorry, lot split.
Correct.
Excuse me, apologize for that. And we were under, I think if you remember, we were under the same concern of what are we approving? And then it gets to a point where this kind of fits, in general, what we're, what we thought. Like, it makes you feel better, which you've sort of stated. During, was this brought up at that time to us? I'm trying, I don't remember exactly.
So this reciprocal lot, this reciprocal document, easement agreement, was brought up. The concern that I addressed more primarily there was the language related to parking, because there is a, there is a grant of parking entitlement to my client. It's not really reciprocal, it's a, it's a grant from the Casto property to my client for additional parking outside of the Burger King lot. The access issue really didn't come up, because frankly, we didn't know it was going to be there, and now we see that it's interfering with the access.
Okay. And in that reciprocal parking that you're talking about, that was blanket, right, over the whole area? It wasn't a specific designated area?
It, it wasn't, it was blanket over the entire Casto lot, yes.
Okay. Okay.
Anyone else with questions? Thank you. Anyone else that has not spoken yet that would like to speak?
I'm a Casto, you know, Casto partner. Could I address a few of his comments?
Sure.
So there, Casto is a successor to Duke, so that is accurate, and some of the comments that were made are accurate, I mean, but, but there are portions that are also part of the document that Mr. Fellerhoff excluded, and those portions grant Casto as a successor to Duke, and Seven Brew as a successor to Casto. It grants them the ability to relocate and reconfigure. This is in item two, it is the very last two lines on the first page, where it says, "Notwithstanding the foregoing, Duke, Casto, Seven Brew shall be entitled to relocate and reconfigure that portion of the access drives and parking areas located within the crosshatched area that Mr. Fellerhoff pointed out, to provide parking spaces immediately adjacent to the Burger King track without Burger King's prior written consent." So we don't need their consent, "so long as such relocation and reconfiguration does not materially impair ingress and egress from the then-existing curb cuts from the Burger King track and Union Cemetery and Fields Oral Road." And so, from the time we have started marketing this property, any user we have spoken to, we have highlighted the Burger King curb cuts, where they exist today, going from the Casto property to the Burger King property. And we've instructed those users, you can't change any of these. You cannot physically make it wider, bigger, relocate it. There are three access points. One up along Fields Oral Road, the, the way the drive has functioned for the last 34 years is not changing. The drive from the signal on Fields Oral Road across the Coles parking lot to the Burger King curb cut, it's staying the way it is, the way it is today, and the way it has operated for 34 years. There are two curb cuts on the Burger King parcel on the south side, or behind their building, that come out onto the little finger of the Seven Brew lot that goes to Union Cemetery. Those two curb cuts, there are no changes, none whatsoever. And as a matter of fact, another comment, I believe that Seven Brew is in the process of, of providing those, giving the Burger King parcel owner even more protection by saying, you know, in a document, that those curb cuts are protected curb cuts. And then the last comment that I would make is, Mr. Fellerhoff represents the owner of the property. However, the operator of the property is the Amplor Company, and they run the Burger King, and they're not here opposing anything. So, so they're the one that runs the business. They're the one who sells product, who brings trucks in to provide, you know, delivery of merchandise and food product. They're the one that wants to get customers on and off of the site, and they're not here opposing anything. And they've remodeled the property, they did a really good job remodeling the property. I believe, I believe this board approved a plan around July or August of last year, and then they, they remodeled the property the end of the year. It looks great. And I have no specific knowledge, but in general, for a company like Amplor to spend the money to do that amount of remodeling, they probably have 15, 20, 25, 30 years or more of control of the property. And so, they're going to control it for 15 to 40 more years, and they're not here opposing anything. In regards to the cross parking that Mr. Fellerhoff referenced, it is a non-exclusive agreement, as it exists from time to time. That document was done in 1990, when we redid, or when we redid the major modification to the plan. We showed photos from the last 25 years. The parking has never been used, in regards to the parking. I don't know if there's an, I don't think there's an issue with the parking, because the Amplor Group, when they made their first application to you in June or July, their, their application actually asked to reduce the parking on their property, then they went in and redid it, and I don't think they did reduce it, but their first application was to reduce parking on the Burger King property, which is another indication that they just, they don't, they don't even need the parking that they have. They've never used the parking that's on the Seven Brew parcel, and so, again, I can't fathom how someone could think that it's disservice or disruption, especially when they're not operating the business. And I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Are you opposed, opposed to speaking with them about this issue?
We started last September, so I mean, it's not like we haven't. We put in writing an offer last September, so September, October, November, December, January, February, March, it's seven months, and it's, you know, it's, it's not done. And so, it is now more, you know, we were, we were taking a lead at one point, and now it is more that, you know, we are supporting what Seven Brew wants to do. So it's not for me to oppose or, or support. We've attempted to, you know, the Casto company has attempted to try to come up with some resolutions for seven or eight months, and it hasn't worked so far. So delaying it, I don't know what delaying this vote for, you know, two minutes or two weeks, or, you know, after seven months, if you haven't worked something out, I don't know what the likelihood is that you actually will. But again, this document, this plan is in compliance with all of section two, not just the part that he pointed out, but when you read the whole thing, it's in compliance with it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me. And I represent Anchor Point here as well, and we've had a number of conversations with seller and seller's counsel. We feel extremely confident that this is a non-issue, and this will be satisfied here in, in the near future.
Okay. Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
So, you know, it's been seven months, what's, what's the holdup? Is it...
Part of, part of the holdup, to be honest, is the property owner has, has been away, and to his credit, in a difficult situation, so communication has, has been slow. But we are very confident, we are close to the end, and we have a good relationship with him, even despite all of this, and feel confident that we have a Plan B as well, if needed, to rectify the situation.
So I'd be interested in hearing, you know, if you care to share what Plan B is.
At this point, that's between us and...
Sure. Okay. And, and the second question on that is, you know, given that it sounds like you guys are close to making a final determination of one kind or another, would you be opposed to punting this for 30 days and coming back in a month with a definitive agreement between you all, and, you know, we could then make a decision based on full, accurate information from all parties?
I would be opposed to that, yes. As, as gentlemen before we, you know, stated, at the end of the day, we don't believe this is a issue at hand. This is really us trying to be a good neighbor and work with a property owner. You know, like you said, all the access points have changed, nothing has dramatically changed. I sat at the site for three hours today, and there was no more than three cars parked there, maybe five people through the drive-through, even from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. So I don't see what the hardship is there. We're, we're trying our best to be a good neighbor, and we'll continue to do that. But to delay this 30 days over this issue, we would oppose that, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor, would you like to... Yeah, I'm going to be brief. I really have no intent of getting in a long-winded argument about this. I, I'm just going to stay with the, you know, reference to the section two, the language that was pointed out, is they do have certain rights with limitations to change it unilaterally, if they're putting parking spaces in that area. They're not putting parking spaces in that area. And the seven months, there have been discussions for seven months, but there have been different discussions for seven months. In the fall, there was a conversation that broke down, and then, once this, this agreement came in, I received, the first communication I received from Anchor Point Management is the February 23rd left email, so it's really only been going on for maybe a month, the most. It was just explained to me on the phone by the representative of Anchor, of Anchor Point Management, that one of the options that they're considering, and I don't know if that's what was being referred to, is changing the site plan. And so, I don't know why you would go ahead and want to approve a site plan if changing the site plan, you're just going to have to come back and do that. It doesn't make sense to me. You know, unless I was being told something differently, something inaccurate on the phone with the representative from Anchor Point Management. I don't see how 30 days waiting will hurt. It does violate my client's rights, and I'm just going to say this, I understand Burger King's short-term interest in getting this done. My client owns this property, my client has, has to, if Burger King leaves, my client has an asset. And those, that, those property rights, which include aspects that are off of the lot, are being infringed upon, and it's, my client's interest is different than Burger King's. And so I'm happy to answer any other question.
Thank you.
I think we've hashed it out.
Thank you. All right, at this point, I would like to close the public hearing, and we will discuss it among ourselves. Comments? Thoughts?
Well, I'm, I'm not inclined to want to wait in the middle of a unresolved dispute between property owner, you know, between property owner and potential property owner. And, you know, I, I think we ought to let them work this out. I think, quite frankly, giving them a timeline provides the impetus to get this resolved in 30 days. And if there's material harm that's being done, it's being done to a current entity and not a proposed future entity. So I'd like to see what that final resolution one way or another is.
Can I ask you a question, Brian?
Yep.
If, if you just take it in the most simplistic standpoint, the access issue that's shown on this document is an easement of some sort. How, from a zoning perspective, from an easement standpoint, if you can't build on it, you can't build on it, right, or design around it? I mean, I realize we don't ask for Ulta surveys going to that level, but...
No, this is why we don't, honestly. The easement that's being referred to on this attachment, it never existed. There's not a driveway out onto Field Durrell where that access easement comes out to the road, or was whenever approved in that location. So that, coming up the west side through the Seven Brew property and saying that that's an easement, can't be built on, I'm not a lawyer and I'm not a judge, I'm not going to determine that, it just doesn't seem like that was ever the area where access was actually gained. You have a driveway out onto Field Durrell Road, you have a driveway along the front of the property that's not changing, as the applicant states, that there's two-way access across the front of Seven Brew, like there is today. And there's two driveways that come out onto the same driveway that goes out to Union Cemetery Road, and those aren't changing at all. Nothing about that is part of this final development plan, they're not asking for a modification of that area. So when you came, when you come into the property off of Field Durrell Road, you can choose to turn left and drive straight to Burger King, through the parking field, like you could today. You can go down along the main drive in front of Coles and come out through the same driveway down to the other two driveways into Burger King, like you can today, and you can come off Union Cemetery. What's happening in this parking lot is only taking away parking spaces that are adjacent to the Burger King property. But even the, the language of this easement, like was pointed out, doesn't say that the parking space they have rights to across the Coles property have to be adjacent, it says that they have access to any parking space on any part of Coles property. But it doesn't say where they have to be.
Well, it does mention that if it's adjoining the property, on the notwithstanding language. I guess what we're getting, I mean, the word easement is a loose term, because it's a recorded document that has it. It's not a official easement per se, but it is a declaration of reciprocal easement agreement, so it really is an easement that sort of states that.
Usually what that means is that they can drive across any part of Coles property, and Coles can drive across, across any part of Burger King's property. That's the typical agreement. Otherwise, you would be potentially citing somebody for trespassing in your parking lot when they went outside of their easement area. I mean, they're assured access to Field Durrell, and assured access to Union Cemetery. But again, as I stated, I'm an attorney or a judge, this is something that needs to be worked out between the two property owners. And the only, the only, the only issue that I would have with the continuance is the, the idea that they need to work this out before you can approve the zoning plan, which is not the case. You can approve the zoning plan regardless of the easement situation, and if your intent is to not approve it until the easement is done, that doesn't actually give the Burger King property a timeline, it actually delegates your authority to that property owner, because if they don't want it, they can just never agree.
I don't think that we've, in my, my prior statement, I never intended that to be a forever continuance, so it was a 30-day continuance.
Sure, I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to say that it was. This was, the next step is, when you come back in 30 days and they don't have an agreement, and you give another 30 days, if you get to the point where you're requiring the property owner adjacent to an inter-investment agreement, there will be some legal issues with that, delegation of authority.
From that standpoint, I personally have no issue with the use that they're proposing. I think there were some concerns it was going to be another fast food restaurant, I don't find it conflicting, I find it something that would be, I don't even like coffee, but it's something that would be helpful for the community. So taking that in consideration of wherever we go, the only thing that I, you know, it's our struggle on the board all the time, is just signage, and trying to make sure that we keep it within line, so it's fair and balanced the best we can moving forward, especially on the Field Durrell corridor that has become, you know, a commercial corridor, more so than probably some of us like that live here. So, so those are just my two opinions on, you know, I'm supporting where Jeff's going, but I also support the project.
Similarly, I have no issue with the dumpster and the variance on that. The canopy issue, I think, can just be adjusted. Signage, like my predecessors, I, we have the code, I don't see a specific need for a variance with respect to three sides, in terms of the size. Unlike some of my co-commissioners, I don't have a problem addressing the merits as far as the, the actual final development plan today. I'm not sure 30 days is going to fix things one way or the other. Honestly, if you, if you approve the plan as is, and it changes, and they need to come back, they need to come back before us, and maybe the decision today will push them to resolve the issue outside of here. Thoughts?
Along the same lines as everybody, I agree with the dumpster variance, I think we have to hold tight on signage. I do give them credit for coming in with a monument sign as opposed to a pylon sign, and we kind of indicated a little bit to Burger King that we might give a little on wall signage if they had, were willing to give up their pylon. So next time they come in, come in with a pylon. But likewise, I don't know how much visibility they're going to get on the east side anyway, so I think they should comply. In terms of this document, which, you know, got put before us here just minutes ago, I don't think we should be in the position of interpreting this and deciding, you know, the party's rights or anything with that. It's, it's a private agreement, so I guess I'm more inclined, Chairman, to give approval to the, to the plan as we see it, if we like it, and I hate to invite a lawsuit or anything between the, the landowners, but I think we ought to be supportive of neighboring property owners battles.
Thank you. So I guess the first issue you brought up, Jeff, is...
So, I guess the first issue you brought up, Jeff, is whether you decided on the merits tonight or a continuance. He wants to put forth the motion, we can address it accordingly, otherwise, I don't recommend just going forth with the merits.
Well, it looks like I'm going to be out.
I just rest a little bit of indifference.
Yeah, so, I mean, if we'd like to just get it on the record, I'll, I'd be happy to put forth a motion to, to-
Continue?
Continue for 30 days, in an effort to give property owners the opportunity to come to a definitive agreement relative to the reciprocal easement agreement, knowing that this would be a one-time continuance, and at our next meeting, then, we could make a definitive determination.
Okay. Would anyone like to second the motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Deuss?
I'm going to say no.
Mr. Kessler?
No.
Mr. Eckman?
Yes.
Mr. Edder?
Yes.
You got it.
Well, that wasn't helpful.
So the motion does not pass, correct?
Right. You got the easy one.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion with respect to the underlying approval of the proposal with conditions or variances?
All right, I'll make a motion on that. I will make a motion to approve the, what are we calling this, the Sims 2022-03 Coles Out parcel Seven Brew, with the allowance of the variance relative to the dumpster location, and, but that would be the only variance, and no variance on the size of the awning, and no variance on the size of the signage.
Brian, is that motion clear to you?
You're suggesting, let's see, you grant the variance for the dumpster location to allow the dumpster property, where it already be just required in the side yard.
At its current location.
To require the awning be located in compliance with the side yard setback. And that all building mounted signage shall meet the requirements of the Sims Township zoning resolution.
Yes, we're- You got it.
I will second.
Mr. Edder?
Yes.
Mr. Deuss?
Yes.
Mr. Eckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Do we have any old business?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No.
Any new business?
We do have a meeting next month, it's going to be Silver Spring House.
Really?
Have we ever heard from them?
It's a revision to their sidewall.
Their sidewall?
Just the sidewalk, yeah.
Sidewalk? Did they build it in the wrong spot?
No, they have a building to get.
Oh, okay. Is it the one on Snyder or the one on Kemper?
Snyder.
Snyder. Supposed to go all the way to the street, right?
That's what's approved on the approved final development plan, yes.
They don't want it going to the street?
They wanted to go back to the way they showed it, as part of the zone change, back off the road.
So they could park their cars there? They don't need that anymore.
They have, they have a different reasoning that they can explain next month.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. All right. On that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Administrative matters?
Administrative matters?
No.
Now can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Eckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mr. Deuss?
Yes.
Mr. Edder?
Yes.
So something like that with the easements that we were-